Hello.
Hey, Robert.
Hi.
Get situated here.
It's a cool night tonight.
Mm-hmm.
There it is. Good evening, Bishop.
Hey. Welcome.
We had our first service in our church last Sunday. It was so good to be back in church.
Ooh.
And we had our, we had a funeral memorial service in the sanctuary the week before. So, we're getting there.
Little bit.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
How long's it haven't been?
Uh, since April, St. Andrew Lutheran in New Bern.
Mm-hmm, right, yeah.
Well, wait a minute, no, it's been longer than that since.
It's been, it's been two years, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Two years.
Yep, since the hurricane.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was thinking. It was, uh, it was Florence, wasn't it, that got so much rain on you guys? And that was two years ago yesterday, I think.
Yeah, yep, yep, two days ago, somewhere's around there, somewhere's around this time.
Yeah, but it's, uh, it was really, those of the folks who aren't, who don't know that, you know, I don't know if you remember, CNN just kept focusing on New Bern, North Carolina, and everybody had thought it was going to be somewhere else on the coast, but no, New Bern, yeah, like thirty, thirty to thirty-six inches of rain.
Oh, yeah, and it just didn't seem, it didn't seem to want to go away.
Um, I don't think that Sally that's there right now in the Gulf and coming up our way, I mean, it's going very slowly, but that Florence here just came and plain old sat on you all for about a day and a half. I mean, it just, it didn't go anywhere, sat on you.
Yep, that's, that's what it did. So, we're hoping it just kind of stays over your way a little bit.
Yeah, well, you all have such a beautiful worship space, and it was just so devastating to, you know, have everything soggy and moldy and not be able to be in there, but.
Well, we were, we were doing pretty well. We had the chapel that we were in, which was very nice on Saturday nights, because it, you know, you only had about thirty or forty people there, but it just made everything so comfy, cozy.
Yep, yeah, I, and I, one of those weekends where we had four services, so I'm like, I'm preaching again, and again, and again, and again.
Yeah, yeah, we enjoyed that, sir, when you were there. That was really good, very inspiring.
It was a nice weekend.
It was.
Nice weekend.
Yeah, we felt very inspiring.
Renee?
Yeah.
I, I came in after I heard, where, where are you from?
New Bern, North Carolina.
St. Andrew Church.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're muted, Marilyn. Uh, unmute yourself. I can't unmute her, she's got to do it herself.
Okay, I thought I had unmuted and then I got muted. Yeah, I'm St. Andrews Hickory.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
So, just as a test run, do you all see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
This says Gospel of Mark, chapters three and four.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure before I, now, when, when we get to that time, I'll get all panicky and hit the wrong button again, but, um.
Hey, we all hit the wrong button.
Well, you, you would think after six months of sometimes doing this nine hours a day, um, but no. Once a digital non-native, always a digital non-native.
Uh-huh. I was, we were talking Sunday in church, we were so impressed with the amount of people that were at this Bible study last week. It was awesome.
Yeah, we, we have a close to four hundred and fifty signed up, I think, and, uh, but we don't expect anywhere near that number to be here every week. It's just like the COVID class I took at Lenoir, a hundred people. We recorded, a lot of people either just missed it, or, um, or they go back and look at this YouTube recording, but yeah, it's, it's really cool to, to be with a Bible study from people from really all over the state, and I know we had people from New York and Georgia, and I don't know where all, but I couldn't see all, I couldn't teach and look at all the screens at the same time, but, but it is, the, uh, the only bad thing is, um, so many people, we just, we can't really interact very well. It becomes like the Tim Show, which is dangerous, and it's Pastor Sarah will, will attest. But, um, but yeah, it's a, it's a good thing to be together, so.
It is still a blessing to.
About six fifty-seven, and so we'll wait just a little bit, but I see some people I didn't see last week. I knew they were here, but I'm looking at different people on the screen. I see, uh, I see Susan Bauer, and, uh, I've thought about her and her husband Lou, who passed away a couple of years ago, when, when we lost Pastor Frank Perry, also another Holy Trinity Chapel Hill pastor, so.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, we've, we've lost a couple of good ones from, from that part of the world.
Oh, no.
And, uh, Susan, you're, you're Lakes now, you said, right?
I am at Twin Lakes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I moved here in March, just as everything shut down.
Yeah, yeah.
But I still met a lot of nice people here.
Yeah, and, and that's where Pastor Perry lived as well.
That's right.
His family said, please do share, because we want people to know that it's real, but he did die of COVID.
Oh, my.
Ninety-six, was it ninety-five, ninety-six?
Yeah.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, I believe.
Yeah, so far, he's the only COVID death that we have had at Twin Lakes.
Yes. So, let's, let's pray that that will be the last one as well. I'm going to scroll through a little bit, because once I get started teaching, I won't be able to see, and it's okay if you're not showing yourself on your camera. My wife never does.
What chapter was it?
At least not on purpose.
Once we get started, I will mute everybody, so that we don't get a lot of feedback from folks, so. And I will, well, the bishop can tell you. I'll try to keep an eye on the chat bar.
What was the Bible, uh, chapter three and four on mom?
Uh, three and four tonight, yes.
Okay.
The last week, we did one and two, and I, I spent more than thirty minutes of our hour, um, doing some background information, which, um, might have been a bit tedious, and I, I know I did it too fast, but by the time we prayed and got started and everything.
Wait a minute.
So, yeah, we have, uh.
What did you say?
Looks like we might be having a good number of folks tonight, and there's several, uh, several rostered ministers here, deacons and pastors, so, uh, we're glad you're here, um, as well, and you're welcome to chime in, especially if I say a Greek word and say it wrong or something, or translate it wrong, um, because I'm not, I don't claim to be a monstrous Greek scholar. They, they make us take, uh, in all, well, I think it's all the Lutheran seminaries still, right, Pastor Sarah, that we have to take Greek, but not all of them have to take Hebrew anymore.
Wow.
So, got about a hundred and twenty or so, but let's wait another minute or so, and then we'll kind of get started, but I, I know that sometimes when we get, a lot of people at the actual hour trying to get on at the same time, it takes a little while for everybody to get in. It's sort of like church, though, right? I mean, this morning at eleven o'clock, we had our weekly rostered ministers call, and I think at eleven o'clock when we started, we had like twenty-nine, and by the time, like, by ten after eleven, I think we had fourteen.
Bishop, say something, because I muted everybody, and I think I muted.
Well, it, it says that.
I can hear you.
Yeah, you can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm here, and y'all are here, and, uh, and I think some folks will continue, uh, to join us, but, um, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, and start at least with some announcements and preliminary kind of things. First of all, Pastor Sarah Elderton is our sort of Zoom host tonight, so Pastor Sarah, why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, y'all. It is good to be with you. Some I've already seen earlier today, and it's good to see you again. Uh, I serve on the bishop's staff as one of Bishop Smith's assistants. I work primarily with candidacy, which is those folks that are preparing for rostered leadership in the church, and then I also work on boundary training and misconduct issues.
Well, thank you for, for being here tonight. We try to always have at least a couple of, somebody can watch the chat bar, and, in the, uh, in the case that anyone misbehaves, that person can tend to that, and the most likely one of, that is me, um, if there's going to be misbehaving. So, uh, but, uh, I just want to take a bit of a moment of personal privilege while we're still letting a few other people sign in and just say, uh, you know, we prayed last week at the end, and you all typed a lot of people in the chat bar, and it was moving too fast with so many people, and we said we would pray for them during the week, and, uh, and in fact, I have done that and prayed for it again today, uh, that, all those folks, but at the same time, I, we've, we've had a sort of a rough week in the synod office, in addition to just the general things of political tension and, uh, and, and COVID, and hurricanes, and earthquakes, and wildfires, and all of those sorts of things that are happening. Pastor Danielle, who was our host last week, um, their little boy Moses had surgery yesterday, and it was, they thought just a quick little thirty-minute thing to get out a couple of lymph nodes, and it turned out to be something with a long name that we think they addressed well, but it took four hours, and he had to spend the night in the hospital, so she's taking the rest of the week off. Uh, also, last week, the day after we met, Tammy Jones West, um, one of our bishop's assistants, uh, husband Eric died after a four-year battle with colon cancer. And we knew it was coming, but you know, you, you can get ready in your head, but you can't get ready in your heart, and, um, and, and you, and you're never really ready even after the fact, so. Tammy, and then Pastor Phil Tonason on our staff, mom was severely burned, second and third degree burns in a grease fire on the stove, and she dropped the pot then on the floor, and then slipped and fell in the grease and was lying in the hot grease, and, uh, so she's had to have three surgeries, uh, at Winston-Salem, and she's still in the hospital there, and Pastor Sarah last, uh, Saturday has helped at the funeral of really a family member, nanny, would you say nanny? Megan was your nanny for years, but a family friend.
She was the daughter that, had I had children at the normal age.
Right, right, so, but anyway, yeah, it's just been a really unusual piled-up, uh, week of, uh, challenges and grief for our synod staff, and so, uh, we appreciate your prayers for those folks, and, um, uh, we all have kind of our moments and times, and right now, I'm blessed, uh, and that could change in a heartbeat, right? But, but right now, as far as I know, um, I and my family are relatively okay, so, let's, uh, let's pray, shall we? The Lord be with you. Gracious God, you promised to be present with us always, but especially that we might receive your Holy Spirit through your word. You are the word made flesh, and this is not just static ink on a page written once long ago, uh, but a living word, because you are risen from the dead, um, and your word continues to evoke and call forth and transform us and call us to be the people you would have us be. Uh, it comforts us, it challenges us. Uh, we ask that you give us attentive minds and hearts, that we might learn from one another this evening, and that we might in some small measure, uh, be drawn into your likeness, rather than what at least I normally am trying to do, draw you into mine. Help that work up the right direction, and we pray in the name of Christ. Amen. Y'all do that, too. I do it all the time. Um, I decide what I want, and then I ask God to bless it, don't you? And, uh, should work the other way around, that I, I kind of figure out what is God blessing, and then aim that way, but, uh, my humanity is, uh, always working on me. So, uh, last week, you all had put some questions in the chat bar, and we had taken so much preliminary time that we didn't get to, uh, all the questions. I went back and looked at them, and we did address most of them. There, there was quite a bit of discussion around the Holy Spirit, uh, as we talked about, Jesus and the Holy Spirit descending at his baptism, and, uh, then we, we talked a bit about John the Baptist, and that the Holy Spirit when John the Baptist leaped in, you know, his mother's womb, when, when Mary greeted Elizabeth and so forth, so, uh, so, so this, this Holy Spirit is, is not a well-defined, uh, entity, but it is clearly an energy and a power and a presence. I mean, as you know, through the rest of the New Testament, the Holy Spirit is, is an intercessor, is an advocate, um, is, is an empowerer, uh, but also, uh, that which sort of conveys the presence of Jesus, uh, post-resurrection and post-ascension. Uh, you know, I will send to you, you know, another advocate, uh, a powerful advocate. So, this Holy Spirit, and somebody pointed out in the chat bar last week that I had a chance to digest a little better, um, since then, that, uh, that Holy Spirit was present and hovering over the face of the deep, really before creation. So, you remember I said that, you know, in the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, the Word was God, the Word became flesh, so the Word, let there be light, creatures, and so forth. Um, the Word is what evokes and creates all things, and then John makes the claim, the Gospel of John, that the, the Word became flesh, so, so Jesus is the Word incarnate in, in the flesh. But the, but that Word is pre-existent to creation, so is the Holy Spirit, because before God calls forth, the Spirit is already hovering over the deep, so. And it's really interesting, even when we read the Genesis texts, about this whole relationality, not just of creation itself, but of God. Um, it's very clear, there are singulars and plurals in Hebrew. Let us make humankind in our image, God said. Who's God talking to? Um, let us, you know, so, so there's this relationality, uh, and so, you know, the mystery of the Trinity is something that certainly of all Gospels Mark doesn't get into, but this Creator, Father, uh, this Son Redeemer, this Holy Spirit, Advocate, Empowerer, Sanctifier, that is, makes holy, all are present, even before creation, and so, all tied together. All separate, but all God, so God is, uh, and that's very, very confusing to, to a number of people who say, we are monotheists, but wait a minute, you have three? Um, no, uh, it's a mystery. I'm going to, uh, open my sharing of screen here and see if I can get to the texts here in just a moment. Do you all see my, just nod yes if you see my Gospel of Mark chapters three and four screen. Okay, good. And I'm going to hit the slideshow from the beginning thing, let's see, and that'll maybe make all the other little pieces go away, so you can see my screen a little bit better. In this Gospel of, uh, of Mark, uh, let me see. We've been seeing that, remember, there's this great mystery, who is this guy? Wait a minute, who is this? No, you can't do that. You can't forgive sins. Who are you? Who do you think you are? Who was this guy? Who is this, that even, you know, these demons obey him? So, we're seeing this in, in just the first few, uh, chapters, really, chapter two and really the first part of chapter three, we're seeing two main things. One, there's this kind of mystery and secret about Jesus' identity, and we're going to see that that really is pervasive. Remember the voice from heaven in Matthew and Luke at the baptism, and in John, it says, uh, "This is my son, the beloved," as if the voice is talking to everyone, but in Mark's Gospel, it's just directly to Jesus. You are my son, the beloved. So, who knows who Jesus is? Jesus knows who Jesus is. The disciples clearly don't know who Jesus is, maybe not even by the end of the Gospel in this one. The, um, the demons know who Jesus is, uh, and so he's always getting on the demons and saying, don't, no, 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 uh, no, shh, shh, don't tell anybody, you're going to blow it all. Um, don't tell anybody. But there's also this thing of authority. Um, uh, who's he interacting with? Remember in, uh, in Matthew and Luke, it's largely the Pharisees, who are his foil, uh, but in, in Mark, the Pharisees are there, but it's largely the scribes, which is rather odd. Um, it's not the Sadducees. And all of these, all these, uh, and they're, and they are mostly guys, although we do know there were some female scribes and some female Pharisees. But by the time that Jesus lived for about a hundred years, uh, this is kind of interesting, Pharisees and Sadducees, you know, we sing little songs about, you know, I don't want to be a Pharisee, or I don't want to be a Sadducee, uh, and they're not the same. They were warring factions within Judaism, and their big, uh, bone of contention was the Pharisees believed in resurrection from the dead, which was a really a good precursor of Jesus, so early on, the Pharisees are very interested in Jesus. Um, the Sadducees absolutely thought, if you allow for resurrection of the dead, nobody's going to obey the law, so there can't be any resurrection of the dead. The scribes, some of whom were Pharisees or Sadducees, were more kind of legal people within Judaism, who could write up loans and write wills, uh, and all that kind of thing. Uh, and so the scribes are the ones giving Jesus the hardest time, uh, but five times early on, the controversy mounts. Jesus is making enemies really, really fast, even by the time we get to chapter three. Over what does he have power so far? Demons. What does he do? He casts out demons. What else does he have power or authority over? Uh, you shouldn't really use those words interchangeably, but right now I am. Illness, uh, power over illness, but really remember, those are kind of the same thing, because if you have an illness, it's because somebody sinned. Remember, we talked last week about the man born blind? Uh, that we'll get to, um, who sinned, this man or his parents, because the assumption was if something was wrong with you, somebody sinned, and that was the punishment. Um, this, uh, this, this demonic sort of a sense as well, uh, we, we talked last week, remember, that, uh, much of what, even if you look at what they describe as possessed by a demon, and what those people are doing as they are possessed, we would call a mental illness, uh, we would call a, a, a schizophrenia, um, a, a, a multiple, uh, sort of personalities. We are legion, you know, for we are many, um, there, you know, all of these kind of things, we, and, and that's not to say that, that the, the New Testament texts are wrong, or that we're enlightened and right, but we're looking at it from different angles and describing it in different sort of languages and schools of thought, so, uh, demon and illnesses, and, uh, so that's where Jesus has power so far. Uh, I just wanted to include this quote, and it's a controversial quote, but, um, John Dominic Cruston is a Roman Catholic, um, biblical scholar, who in the Roman Catholic Church is akin to Bishop John Shelby Spong in the Episcopal Church, kind of goes out on a limb and is controversial and is always being chastised by the powers that be, but when he, uh, wrote, uh, questions, answers to your questions about the historical Jesus, uh, last week, we talked a good bit about literal, and how, how, is that helpful for us to, to, to say or not? If you're a literalist, God bless you, and if it works for you, God bless you even more, because I would love to be sometimes. Uh, I'd like to just open up my Bible and, um, but, but you know, the fact is, uh, you can't, like, if I, if I hand Pastor Sarah a phone book, um, and say, um, would you please look up the definition to xylophone? She can look back and forth all day, and it's, and she's not going to find it, is she? Uh, likewise, uh, if I, if I hand her a Bible and say, um, would you look up, uh, the pizza place down the road and order us a pizza, uh, out of this book? She's not going to be able to do that either, and it doesn't mean either of the books is flawed, it just means that it's important to understand as best we can what those books were written for. Uh, and so it's not helpful for us to ask questions of Scripture perhaps, that it wasn't addressing, although we, it is helpful for us to talk about them by implication or by association. This is stronger than I would want to put it, uh, to you, or really to anyone, but I, I thought that it was a, uh, an interesting point. He says, "My point, once again, is not that those ancient people told literal stories, and we are now smart enough to take them symbolically." That's not what, you know, modern, modern biblical criticism is about, but the point is that they told them symbolically, and we're now dumb enough to take them literally. Dumb is not the word that I think is helpful, right? Um, but, uh, but what I do think, uh, is maybe important for us to acknowledge is that a God or a Scripture or a text that becomes literal, the great danger that we have is that we begin to worship the text, the ink on the page, and it is immutable. In a sense, it's dead, because it can't do anything else other than what it originally said. For a text to be a living word that continues, even though I read it over and over and over, and you know how many times I've read this passage in front of us now? I mean, more than a hundred. And, and it, and it continues to speak to me where I am, and to move, and to, to call forth. Uh, and so, again, I'm not trying to shame anybody who might want to use the word literal, uh, but I do want to say that that's not the way your rostered ministers are trained in ELCA seminaries, and hasn't been for close to a hundred years. That, uh, that there's a deep, deep richness to Scripture. There's, there's metaphor, there's hyperbole, there's poetry, there's history, there, there are all of these things, and we don't ask questions of it, that it's not intended to, uh, to, to, to answer. So, chapter three, let's jump in here. Um, so, again, Jesus entered the synagogue. Remember, he had just healed a, a leper last week, and, uh, and one of the ways he healed the leper was by touching him, which meant that, uh, Jesus became unclean. which meant that Jesus became unclean, and he did it on the Sabbath. And so, we know already by the previous chapter that it's still the Sabbath. He'd been in the synagogue before, then he went out, now he's come back in. And a man was there who had a withered hand, and they watched him. You know, they're, they're just, they're just, hmm, everybody look, what's he gonna do? Because they know it's the Sabbath, and they're, you know, and they're gonna see if they might accuse him. And he said to the man who had the withered hand, "Come forward." Now, the previous healings that Jesus has done, he doesn't go to them. They come to him, right? The paralytic through the roof, the, the leper who comes up to him, who's not supposed to. You know, Peter with his mother-in-law and so on. You know, they, they come to Jesus and say, "Would you do this?" But Jesus sees them watching him, and so you get the sense that Jesus says, "Well, since you're watching me, yeah, I'm gonna pick a fight, almost, so to speak, right in front of you." So, he said, "Hey, come here, come forward." And then he looks at the people watching him, and he says, "Is it lawful?" I mean, after all, you all are the scribes and the Pharisees. So, tell me, is it lawful to do good or to do harm on the Sabbath? To save life or to kill? Well, now, some background. Early on, no, it was completely unlawful. But by the time of Jesus, any scribe, or Pharisee, or Sadducee would allow, and any rabbi would allow to say that in a life and death situation, you could, and, and that had happened over years of morphing to say, you know, if your ox falls in the well on the Sabbath, you know, can you take it out? Well, yeah, because it'll spoil the well, and it'll kill the ox, and all of those sort of things. And so, you know, there were all sorts of exceptions that were made religiously. And so, Jesus knew that the answer was, yeah, you can save somebody's life on the Sabbath. He knew that they had to say that, but they were silent, which is always a good thing, because see, in a, in a power struggle, the person asking the questions always has the power. And the person answering the questions is always on the defensive. So, it's really a marvelous kind of rabbinic tool, that you never answer a question. You just ask another question back. Because you're, if you start answering questions, you're on the defensive, and you've already sort of yielded to their authority. So, wisely, in that sense, you know, the, the folks watching him, the Pharisees are silent. Somebody brought up the word anger in the chat bar last week, that was translated in the NRSV, pity. And that is absolutely correct. In the Gospel of Mark, Jesus gets angry a lot. I think at least six times that that word is used. But this time, it's actually translated anger. This time, in Matthew and Luke, when they use this parallel, they don't use the word anger. But, but yes, the NRSV, their new revised standard, uses the word anger. He looked around, verse five, "With anger, he was grieved at their hardness of heart, and he said to the man, 'Stretch out your hand.'" And he stretched it out, and his hand was restored. And then look at verse six. "The Pharisees went out and immediately conspired with the Herodians against him, how to destroy him." Remember that word immediately in Mark's Gospel? Everything is urgent. Boom, 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 boom. That is just moving along, and the people are pressing in, and he gets away, and he tries to pray, and they go get him, and he comes back, and somebody's pressing in again. And he gets in the boat, and then they press in, and then they walk on the other side, and then he does. So, you know, immediately, they conspired with the Herodians against him, how to destroy him. So, we kind of know now, if we didn't know before, whoa. Now, I just want you to imagine in your own little world, if there were a person who claimed to be of God, who spoke a deep truth, or claimed that it was a deep truth, to power establishment, religious, and in this case governmental, because the Herodians were more of a political sect. They were not like Pharisees, scribes, and Sadducees, a Jewish sect per se. They were more political affiliates with the government to try to keep the peace and so forth. So, now you have the religious establishment and the government establishment already in chapter three, conspiring to kill Jesus. Whereas in Matthew and Luke, Jesus isn't even baptized yet, because you have birth stories there, in Matthew and Luke, and genealogies, and so on. So, so we know that they are set over against him now. And again, it, it's pretty clear in Mark, which is, we believe, the very first Gospel written, the oldest Gospel written, the shortest Gospel written, that, that the issue is in fact authority. When you try to usurp someone's power, or they feel that their power, or their possessions, or their anything are threatened, they are simply not going to give it to you out of the goodness of their heart. I'm gonna use a word here, because I think it's, and I'll stand by it. I've been saying it for 35 years, so it's not anything having to do with the current political climate. But Jesus is a rebel and a protester when it comes to the establishment, both governmental and religious. He's not the person that your call committee is looking to call as your preacher, because he's a troublemaker. And we all know how we're supposed to do it. We know the way we've always done it, and he doesn't do it right. So, anyway, so then, let's jump to this next little section here. This, Jesus now gets rejected in Galilee. He's been rejected there in the synagogue. He departs with his disciples to the sea, and a great multitude from Galilee followed him. Have you noticed that that happens all the time? It's always a great multitude in Mark. Hearing all that he was doing, they came to him in great numbers from Judea, Jerusalem, Idumea, beyond the Jordan, the region around Tyre and Sidon. So, they're coming from all over. He's wildly popular, or at least a curiosity. He told his disciples to have a boat ready for him because of the crowd, so that they would not crush him. That was not unusual, it was not unique to Jesus. Those of you who've been to the Holy Land, particularly along the Sea of Galilee, there are a lot of little coves that are protected from the waves, and people can be on the land, you know, probably about maybe 220, 240 degrees around you. And if you're sitting in a boat in the middle, almost in a little bowl, it's like you have a natural amplification system, your voice kind of coming across the water for those people. And, and also, they can't crush in on you, and, and also, everybody can see you. So, that was the way that teachers would sometimes teach in that part of the world. "And he cured many, and all who had the diseases pressed on him to touch him. And whenever the unclean, verse 11, 'When the unclean spirit saw him, they fell down before him and shouted, 'You are the Son of God.'" Now, they didn't just say it, but what did they do? They fell down before him, saying, "You are the Son of God." Essentially, they worshipped him. It's not the word that's used here, but when to fall down, or to bend the knee, is to, is to worship. And he's, verse 12, what does he do when the demons know who he is? "Don't you tell anybody." So, there's this, there's this secret that continues on through, through all of this. "Don't make him known." So, now, he goes up on the mountain. Biblically speaking, a mountain signifies a theophany, that is, a revelation of God. Where did Moses go to get the law? Where did, you know, Ezekiel go to call down fire upon the prophets of Baal, or Baal, we tend to say in English? You know, so, Jesus goes up on the mountain, and he called to him those whom he wanted, and they came to him. Now, we talk about the Greek words, called to hit, to them. Basically, that's not what it says in Mark. We talk, he called the disciples, and that's what we know, the calling of the disciples. But in Mark's Gospel, it says, "He made them come to him." It's not like he was so compelling, it's like they had no choice. He made them come to him. And he appointed 12. Now, there's a number that just came out of the blue. What in the world, especially for a Jewish person, might the number 12 signify? Hmm, of course, the 12 tribes of Israel. "Whom he also appointed as apostles, to be with him, and he sent out to proclaim the message." An apostle is a witness, that is, like to give witness or testimony to someone. After the resurrection of Jesus, the litmus test for being an apostle was that you are a witness of the resurrection in two senses, that you saw the risen Jesus in the flesh, and interacted with the risen Jesus in the flesh, and you told others about the risen Jesus. Then you were an apostle. That's why in our Cranberry Book now, the Evangelical Lutheran Worship Book, under the commemorations, Mary Magdalene is now listed among the apostles. Because, let's face it, who was the first witness of the resurrection in John's Gospel? Yeah, Mary Magdalene. Who was the first person to tell or witness to the risen Jesus she had experienced in the flesh? Mary Magdalene. But in all the Gospels, the women go and tell things, except Marx. Marx is weird. When we get to that, you'll see what I mean. So, to, to proclaim the message, and what do they have? What does he give them? What is it that all of the Pharisees, Sadducees, scribes, and Herodians are upset about? Authority. They have authority to cast out demons, which is to say, also to heal. So, he appointed the 12, and we're gonna get a list that's very similar, although not exactly the same, as in Matthew and Luke. Simon, to whom he gave the name Peter. Remember, in, in Matthew's Gospel, you get that really poignant piece that the Roman Catholic Church hangs on, on to, that, you know, Peter names him the Messiah, and then he calls him, I mean, Simon calls him the Messiah, and then he names him Peter, because it means rock, and you are the rock, and on this rock, I'm gonna build my church. But not here. We just get the name Peter, and we're not told why he has that name. And James, son of Zebedee, and John, the brother of James, we already heard about them, remember? And this is really obscure. People write, you know, PhD dissertations on this. "To whom he gave the name Boanargis." That is, sons of thunder. That is not a Greek word in any way. Nobody knows what that word, Boanargis, means. It does not mean sons, and it does not mean thunder. But Mark translates it for us as sons of thunder. So, somehow, we miss the inside joke on that one. And I mean, we, I mean, all Biblical scholars, from the most conservative to the most liberal, even to the non-believers, everybody agrees on that, that what the heck is Boanargis? Nobody knows what that means, but Mark says it's sons of thunder. And Andrew, and Philip, and Bartholomew, and Matthew, and Thomas, and James, son of Alpheus, and Thaddeus, and Simon the Canaanian. Canaanian, probably not a geographical reference, but a, a sect of Judaism reference. The other Gospels call him Simon the Zealot, you know, who wanted to kind of overthrow the Romans and the government there, and cast off the yoke. And there is a sense that Canaanian might mean that. Judas Iscariot, who betrayed him. There's a, there's a lot of kind of study on Judas's name, if Iscariot sort of is a foreshadowing of some horrible thing he's going to do. But there is a town named Kerioth, K-E-R-I-O-T-H. And Iscariot means a man of, a man of Kerioth. And so, it's almost, I'm pretty convinced that Judas Iscariot just means Judas from Kerioth. But we are told that he betrays him. Now, before we move along, I got a really strange digression for you here. Because you're gonna see these words in a little bit, in some of the accusations against Jesus. The, the ancient Hebrew fertility, or the ancient Canaanite fertility god, right? That, that was always the, the foil of the prophets, like Ezekiel, and so on, and Elijah. And I'm, I should've said Ezekiel, it's Elijah, who, you know, calls down the fire against the prophets of Baal. But it, in Canaanite language, very similar to Hebrew, Ba'alzibul meant Baal the prince. It was a worship word. And that word was intentionally confused in Hebrew to, to be a, an indictment of a poking fun at the Canaanite god. Instead of Ba'alzibul, they said Beelzibul, which literally means the Lord of poop. And so, so, your God is poop. You know, that was the Hebrew thing in a monotheistic sort of a way. And then, if you look at First Kings, chapter two, I think, verse one, no, actually, chapter one, verse two, I'm sorry. Beelzebub means the Lord of the flies, which by the time of Jesus was associated with Satan. So, if you see any of those kind of Satan-y movies, like those old movies about The Exorcist, or the Amityville Horror, or The Omen, or any of those newer movies about, you know, sort of Satan-possessed people, you always see flies buzzing around, right? Because Satan is the Lord of the flies. And there's a novel, of course, by that name, The Lord of the Flies. I mean, I'm sharing that with you on purpose. So, the next section, it, it simply says, I mean, Mark just, Mark just is real choppy. So, this happened, this happened, this, and then he went home. He went home. Ace oik, oikhan, which means he went to a house. And it's translated here, "He went home." But he went to somebody's house, and the crowd came together again, so that, let's see here, I've got to close out my little camera box, so that I can see the text, so that they could not even eat. So, again, the crowd is pressing in. Are you, are you beginning to get a sense that this is constant, immediate, urgent? The crowd, the crowd, the crowd, the crowd, Jesus can't get away. Now, look at this. "When his family heard it," literally in Greek, it says, "When those about him heard it." But there are some good exegetical or interpretive arguments about why this is his family. "When his family heard it," because remember now, he's been rejected at the synagogue, he's been rejected in Galilee, now he goes home. "And when his family heard it, they went out to restrain him, for people were saying, 'He has gone out of his mind.'" You know, no, no self-respecting, good, normal person acts this way, particularly the things he has said, and healing on the Sabbath. Family was such a huge piece of identity and family honor, and he's embarrassing the family honor, even if it's not his actual mother and, and siblings. Although later on, they are mentioned very specifically as mother and siblings, that, that that would be an embarrassment. And so, they're trying to calm him down and restrain him. The scribes who came down from Jerusalem. So, these are not Galilee scribes, these are Jerusalem scribes. And by the way, Jerusalem is quite a bit south of here, so why do they come down from Jerusalem? Everybody comes down from Jerusalem. Jerusalem is up on a hill, Jerusalem is the pinnacle of the universe and the Jewish world. North, south, and all of that really didn't matter. When you come from Jerusalem, you always come down from Jerusalem. They said, the scribes said, "He has Beelzibul, and by the ruler of demons, he casts out demons." So, so they're, they're saying that Satan is the power. Where does he get this authority? We'll tell you where he gets that authority. Must be from Satan. What was it? Dana Carvey, who by the way, is a Lutheran, an ELCA Lutheran, lifelong, who was the church lady years ago. Could it be perhaps Satan? Yes, they think it's Satan. How, and so, he spoke to them in parables. We'll talk about parables in a moment, but how can Satan cast out Satan? Come on, that's not possible. If a kingdom's divided against itself, that kingdom's not gonna stand. And if a house is divided, that house won't stand. If Satan has risen against himself and is divided, he can't stand, but his end is- But his end is come. No one can enter a strong man's house and plunder his property without first tying up the strong man. Then indeed, the house can be plundered. So Jesus is saying, that is absurd. I'm casting out demons and Satan's not going to cast out Satan. Then he really just kind of nails them, these scribes from Jerusalem, mind you. Truly, I tell you, which is hey, a formulaic saying that this is important, listen up. People will be forgiven their sins and whatever blasphemies they utter, but whoever blasphemes against the Holy Spirit. Which is to say it's not Satan, it's the spirit of God and you're blaspheming against the Holy Spirit by calling it Satan. Can never have forgiveness, but is guilty of an eternal sin. Now I will tell you in chapter thirteen and chapter fifteen. Mark and Jesus softened that a bit. But they said he has an unclean spirit and he's saying, oh, no, you didn't. You didn't say that. And then look what happens. Now it definitely does say his mother and his brothers came. Now again, your Catholic Bible, your Jerome Bible is not going to say brothers. Even though we know that the head of the early church in Jerusalem after the. Crucifixion and resurrection and ascension was James, brother of Jesus. He and Peter ran the church in Jerusalem while Paul went out among the Gentiles. But you know, the perpetual virginity of Mary is essential in Catholic theology. I don't really want to spend a ton of time on it, but the whole reason was. They had come to the conclusion that everybody is born with original sin and they figured that the only way that you could possibly. Contract. Original sin is because the way that you were conceived was your parents had sex. And so sex is the ultimate evil. And therefore Mary never had sex and. Was a virgin when Jesus was born. And was a perpetual virgin because if she had later on had other children. By more natural means, then, then she would have ceased to be venerable. And so on. So anyway, but clearly. In the Greek text, he has mother and brother and sisters. So a crowd is sitting and they said, your mother and your brother and your sisters are outside asking for you. It's interesting that they add sisters. Because these followers of Jesus who may have been certainly his blood relatives, but possibly others. It's pretty clear by implication in all four gospels that there were female disciples as well. Early on, very early on, looking at those who sat around him. Jesus said, here are my mother and brothers. Whoever does the will of God is my brother and sister and mother. So. But Jesus now has really been rejected by his family, by his followers. I'm going to keep going quickly so that we can get to some questions. Put those in the chat bar. We'll come back to them. Hang on, buckle your seatbelt if you hadn't already. Chapter four, he began to teach beside the sea, such a very large crowd. He got into a boat on the sea and sat there. We saw that before. While the whole crowd was beside the sea on the land, he began to teach many things in parables. And in his teaching, he said to them, listen. A sower went out to sow and as he sowed, some seed fell on the path, birds came and ate it, other seed on rocky ground. It didn't have much soil and it sprang up, but it didn't have depth. And when the sun rose, it was scorched and withered. Other seed fell among thorns and thorns grew up and choked it. It yielded no grain. Other seed fell into good soil and brought forth grain, growing up and increasing and yielding thirty and sixty and a hundredfold. And he said, let anyone with ears to hear, listen. Now. We've seen youth group skits on that, right? We've done youth group skits. Some of us have preached sermons on this. We've all got a take on it and we're all looking for an angle on it. But I want you to look where this occurs in Mark's gospel, the oldest gospel. Jesus is rejected. In Galilee, he's rejected in Nazareth, he's rejected. In the synagogue, he's rejected by his family, he's rejected by all the religious and governmental authorities. And then he talks about spreading the seed. And only the good soil can receive the seed and bring forth fruit. Which is to say he's convicting all of those people right now who just rejected him. I know who you rocky ground people are. Those people of you who used to follow me and now you're abandoning. I know who you thorns are, who grumick and try to choke because you got your way. I know who all these other people and I know who the good soil is. A parable is a wonderful thing because. I just. I just shared a little parable last week on Facebook with no comment whatsoever about the emperor has no clothes. And all kinds of people made all, read all sorts of things into it, but that's the wonderful thing about a parable is you can read all kinds of things into it. Depending on. Where you might find yourself and identify in the story. So why does he talk in parables? That's interesting. When he was alone, those who were around him. Along with the twelve asked him about the parables and he said to them, to you has been given the secret of the kingdom of God. Even though you don't know I am yet. But for those outside, everything comes in parables in order that they may indeed look, but not perceive. They may indeed listen, but not understand. They may not turn again and be forgiven. Again, he softens that just a little bit. Just a little bit later. But it's an interesting. In fact, it's quite an interesting. Sort of a. Affirmation about the parable's purpose. Jesus is concealing the mystery of the kingdom of God. By means of a parable. So that. People don't misinterpret it by thinking they know what they mean. Or interpreting his miracles or all of these sorts of things. It's not a static something. You might understand it this time, but not next time. You might be bad soil this time and good soil next time. It's not really. This is where the Calvinists really latch on and start getting their double predestination like, you know, Jesus chose some people for the foundation of the universe. And so essentially God created some people for the express purpose of spending forever in hell. All classical Christian theology is predestinarian, but it's not double predestinarian. Lutherans have always been mysterious people and said. Maybe God. Creates some people and chooses some people to be saved, but the rest is a mystery and it's not up to us to say. Jesus even tells other parables, right? Like the planting of the wheat and the weeds together. And don't rip up the weeds. Why? Because it looks a lot like the wheat and you might get some of the wrong ones. Wait till the harvest. And let. The reapers figure that one out. Don't, don't you try to do it? Who's in and who's out? And so he explains the parable and I'm not going to spend a bunch of time on that just because I want to get to the rest. You know, this very familiar passage, you said to them, do you take a lamp and put it under a bushel basket or under the bed? A bushel basket is like a two gallon. Basket. And not on a lampstand, there's nothing hidden except to be disclosed, nothing secret, except to come to light. Let anyone with ears to hear, listen. And he said, pay attention to what you hear. The measure you give will be the measure you get. Still more will be given to you. For those who have more will be given from those who have nothing, even what they have will be taken away. This is not material possessions, by the way. This is the, the, the understanding, the ones who. Open up their hearts and minds to receive Jesus as a new way are. They will grow and produce fruit. But the ones who've already shut down and not opened up that possibility, they don't even have a chance to receive fruit. So even what they have is going to be diminished. There's all kinds of ways you might look at it. This parable alone is only in Mark. Every other parable in Mark is in Matthew or Luke or both. And then there's a bunch of parables in Luke that aren't in any of the others. And there's a bunch of parallels in Luke and Matthew that aren't in Mark, but this is the only one in Mark that the others didn't pick up. The kingdom of God is as if someone would scatter seed on the ground and would sleep and rise night and day and the seed would sprout and grow and he does not know how. The earth produces of itself first the stalk, then the head, then the full grain and the head. Does that remind anybody else of a Thanksgiving hymn? First the grain and then the ear, then the full corn shall appear. So yeah, this is exactly where that comes from. But when the grain is ripe at once, he goes in with his sickle because the harvest has come. God is really doing it all. We plant the seed as agents of God. We reap as agents of God, but the, we don't make it grow. God makes it grow. With what can we compare the kingdom of God? What parable will we use? It's like a mustard seed. Like sown upon the ground, it's the smallest of all seeds on the earth. False. Yet when it is sown, it grows up and becomes the greatest of all shrubs. False. And puts forth large branches. Folks, this is where literalism doesn't help. To be a horticultural literalist is not helpful in this. It is an analogy. It is to say that that which is really, really small. God takes it and brings forth something unbelievably large from it by comparison. And he spoke to them in parables and didn't talk to them except in parables. For one reason, he's got some more work to do and some more things to reveal. And he's so set against other people by now that if he doesn't speak in parables and if he attacks them directly, he's already toast. I mean, are you with me? And this is really a section that goes with chapter five, but it is part of chapter four and that will end us for today. On the scripture text, Jesus stills a storm. You know this one too. On that day when evening had come, he said to them, let's go across to the other side. Ooh, does anybody know what's on the other side of the Sea of Galilee? Gentile territory. Undesirables, heathens. And leaving the crowd behind, they took him with them in the boat, just as he was. Now nobody knows what that means, just as he was. I guess he didn't have his traveling clothes on. Other boats were with him. A great windstorm arose, not unusual on the Sea of Galilee. Very quickly it can happen. Waves beat into the boat. The boat was already being swamped. By the way, the Sea of Galilee is not like your little pond out back in the farm. Sea of Galilee is about thirteen miles by seven miles. It's the shape of a harp. And so that's why it's also called Gneseret, which is the Hebrew word for harp. But he was in the stern asleep on the cushion. They woke him and said, teacher, you, don't you care that we're dying? It's literally dying, perishing sounds too clinical. Don't you care that we're dying? Luke and Matthew both softened this a lot, like. You know, have you noticed that we're in trouble, you know? But he says, don't you care that we're dying? I mean, they're accusing him and he woke up and rebuked the wind and said to the sea, peace, be still. And the wind ceased and there was a dead calm. So now let's add to our list. What else does he have? Power and authority over? And he said, why are you afraid? Do you still not have faith? And they were filled with great awe. In Matthew, it says they fell down and worshipped him and said to one another, who then is this? That even the wind in the sea obey him? I don't know who this is. This is just too weird. This is too strange. So let's, uh, let's look at some of what you all are saying here in the chat bar. I don't know if Pastor Sarah, you've been looking at it. And you've got some things to. To share or. I can just look at it as well. So.
I know there's, there's a couple of questions in there about the secrecy.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I have a theory and it's my theory, right? About, is the question about why the secret?
Yes.
Again, that Jesus certainly wants to be known. In power and authority. But his. Chief goal is to redefine as Messiah. What that power and authority look like and how they issue forth. That is to say that the greatest power of all. It's power that by choice laid itself down. If you watch the, some of the old Star Wars pieces. When. Obi-Wan is. Picks the fight with Darth Vader with the lightsabers and. You know, they're doing their deal and. And as soon as it's clear that everybody's, that Luke and Leia and Han and Chewie and. You know, the plans for the Death Star are getting ready to escape and get away. At that point, he, you know, he. Obi takes his lightsaber, turns it off, bows his head and he says, you know, like. Strike me down and I shall become more powerful than you ever imagined. The greatest power, the most powerful people in the world are not the grabbers. The, the most powerful people in the world are the, the people who are so very powerful. So very assured. So very confident in their power or their faith, whatever you want to call it, that they give it away. Saint Paul talks about kenosis in Philippians, that you pour it out, that you pour yourself out. He doesn't want to be known as miracle worker in the traditional sense. Jesus wants to be known as Messiah, the suffering one. Who lays down his life for the beloved. Now I'm preaching, right? But since you ask. I think that will become more and more clear as we read Mark's gospel. That this secret is intentional on Jesus' part until. When. He announces that he's going to die and go to Jerusalem and that's why, and they try to make him not do it and he does it anyway. And that's where his power happens. So. Bibliolatry, that's right. Beth Woodard says bibliolatry. When I was talking earlier on, but do, but let's think about it, even in worship, let's think about our Lutheran worship. Get out, walk out, have a gospel procession, stand in the middle of the people. Pre and post COVID, right? Like we'll do again someday. Holy Gospel, according to Mark, the fourth chapter. Glory to you, oh Bible. What does it say? What do we say? Glory to you, oh Lord. And then we read the story and then we say, you know, who is this? Even that the wind in the sea obey him? The gospel of the Lord. Praise to you, oh scriptures. No. Who are we worshiping folks? Jesus crucified, risen from the dead, who will come again, who is alive and loose in the world. Not static words on a page. That makes God too small and too limited. I like a God that's literal because I can put that God in a box and control.
I remember Bishop, I remember Charlie, Charlie Siegel at Southern Seminary, some people here may have studied with him saying. If every Bible in the entire world were to be burned, the word of God would continue.
Absolutely. And we, and would be revealed again and would be written. So Norma asked a question, are the three names wordplay? Entity? The Beelzebul, Beelzebub, Beelzebub. Not exactly the same entity. But, but I mean, certainly not. That well, Baal is a satanic god according to the Hebrews, and so they all are basically considered satanic. And so the words are sort of used interchangeably. His own household trying to distance himself. They, it's clear that in his, now again, clearly in Luke, you know, Mary told all about it by the angel. She knows who Jesus is going to be before he's born. So there's not that secrecy piece, but yes, here it is odd that his own family. So thank you. Yeah, Dana Carvey. That's why it's good that some of you are. My generation or older even. So. Because you remember Saturday Night Live and the church lady. That was a long time ago, 20 years ago, right? So Ben Cray, Pastor Ben says, Jesus gave authority and shared secrets of the kingdom with the disciples and the apostles, apostles, even before they knew who Jesus was. And he's talking about his campus ministry in college and he realized it's about grace and not works righteousness. What does this say when someone is ready to be a pastor, council member, Bible study leader? Member, leader in the church. Yeah. So what does it say, Ben? You see my rabbinical little turn the question and ask the question back? I don't know if Ben's microphone is unmuted, so I can't ask him that, but. And there are too many screens probably to find him. But. I, I, I think sometimes. A lot of times when I think one thing it says about those things is none of us thinks that we're worthy to do that. And we're absolutely right. Any of those tasks. But it's not about the works righteousness, it's about the grace and it's about who Jesus is. So to me, that's what that really, that's what that really says.
I just think it's a, thank you for unmuting me, whoever had the power to do so. I just think it's a great question about church leadership and who we make leaders of the church and why we make them leaders of the church. And looking at who Jesus picked and gave authority to. It's just a wonderful question to struggle with today.
It sure is, it sure is. Who is this then? Who is this then that they can even mute, unmute Pastor Ben Cray? Pastor Sarah, yeah. So, well, you all, I appreciate you for taking the time and listening to us go through so quickly here. We wanted to do this in the fall for you all. I want to end us with a prayer. And again, I'm not going to name each person, but I do save this chat and you can save it as well. So if you want to save the chat for the prayers that are on there, that's okay. One thing just that you should know about, and I hope nobody's horrified this time, but when you save the chat, it saves everything, including the private messages that you send to people. So, you know, if you sent a private message and said, does Bishop Tim have a booger? You know, I'll see that. So, you know, just so you know. So, and it's okay. Do I, but, but so let's, let's pray. And as I'm praying and as, and just the way that we'll leave is if you want to type people into the chat bar, if you want some, us to pray for some people this week who are close to you or your congregation or your family.
Did you see the message that somebody requested a hymn?
Somebody requested a hymn? Sing us a hymn since our congregation hasn't, oh my gracious. Already sang you part of a hymn. First the grain and then the ear. Now let's all go get a beer. No, that's not how it goes. So but maybe, maybe next week we'll have Pastor Sarah sing us a tune. Let's pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks that you call us together to study your word. We, we worship you, we adore you. We don't understand you. We consider ourselves, like every generation does, the enlightened ones, as opposed to those people way back when. Those silly folks, how did they not know Jesus was with them? And how often do we miss Jesus in our midst? In the many ways that you come to us and try to speak to us. So give us the grace to pay attention. Help us to have the grace to to forgive ourselves, even as you forgive us and to, and to put ourselves out there and to risk for the sake of the gospel. All these people being named in the chat bar, we lift up to you, whether it's for healing or for assurance or comfort or calm and courage amid fear, whatever it might be. For all those in the path of hurricanes and floods and wildfires and COVID and tension and turmoil and injustice and all the various things that we just press in on us, even as the crowds pressed in on Jesus, we lift up to you, asking for your healing. And we entrust all these folks until we gather again, in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen. Oh me. You all can scoot, we'll see you next week, chapters five and six. And if you can keep, if you want to hang on there and we'll, we won't close the chat bar just yet so that we can get all these folks, I'm going to make sure, if people type stuff after you save the chat bar, you'll only get what was in there up to that point. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait till close to the end, so I can print my chat bar. God's peace be with you, rest well tonight. Kind of overwhelming just to watch these names scroll up so fast and all the people we hold in our hearts.
Bishop, you've got it from here on out? So I think if I end, I'm going to make you host, Bishop.
Okay.
That way. You can have it all. If I can find you, I don't know if I can find you. Oh, there you are.
That's one of the things that happens, y'all, when you get ordained, you can create the host.
All right, you're the host. Go help Lucy finish up one assignment that's
Please, please do, please do. Pastor Sarah's got majors at home. And ours are all grown and scattered.
Thanks y'all so much.
Well, I'm not seeing a lot more names coming into the chat bar. So I'm going to go ahead and close out the meeting and again, hope you all rest well. God's peace.